Good evening. This is the December tenth, two thousand and nineteen, meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by our moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we ask that you keep our first responders and our servicemen and women around the world in your thoughts this evening. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and videotaped. If there is anyone in the audience doing the same, we ask that you kindly identify yourselves, and if it does not appear to be so, so I will move to public comments. Do we have any tonight, Madam Clerk? Do we have council comments this evening?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to say, as everyone knows, I'm a landscape contractor. I was out in this snowstorm. East Long Meadow DPW did a fantastic job. I was in Wilberham, I was in Long Meadow, I was in Springfield. The only place that I felt secure and safe driving on the roads without a chance of getting stuck was East Long Meadow. I'd just like to tip my hat to them, they did a fantastic job.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Great job.
And I am privy this morning to a resident concern about an ice dam of sorts on one of the side streets, and Mr. Fenny dispatched a truck immediately, and within an hour, the resident was responding to us by email thanking for such a quick and responsive resolution. So, kudos to our DPW. Okay, Ms. McNally, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you.
You dropped it in the water on the way in?
So, thank you, Consular Page, for stealing my thunder. My first item was to commend the Department of Public Works for its extraordinary work during that long-duration storm. I did speak with Bruce a couple times over that two-and-a-half-day stretch, and I didn't really relish speaking to him at 5:00 AM, but nevertheless, that's when the calls came in. And I would just echo what you said, I think that the streets were great in East Long Meadow, and they were cleaned up and nonstop, and he had guys working double-time, triple-time, around the clock, or some going home for a brief nap and coming right back, so it was a very good result. Just want to update you that our training sessions that I've been talking about for the last couple of reports have been scheduled. We're going to have a FMLA training, Cobra training, on January ninth. The trainers are going to be from the Employers Association of the Northeast, so it'll be a full-day program, four hours in the morning on FMLA and two in the afternoon on Cobra. We've also scheduled for the seventeenth of January, a unemployment compensation claims training for some of our newer employees and in HR as well, as well as an ACA training. There's a component where we have to respond to some requirements under the Affordable Care Act that's overwhelming our benefits coordinator at the moment, so we're getting those people the support that they need and deserve. We're moving forward with our ADP project. We did sign the consultant's contract. The company is known as Ignite, so hopefully they'll ignite us to a prompt, efficient conversion on all things automated data processing-related. The payroll is going to start the first part of Janu- January, pardon me, and we now have access with our HR Director and Benefits Coordinator, and my assistant Jennifer have access to the HR module on that project. So, there are conference calls scheduled every Wednesday from July till February, so they're going to start participating on those calls now, so I'm pleased to report that. I had a brief meeting with the Fire Chief and with a representative from the Insurance Services Office. I don't know if you're familiar with that organization, but now it's a for-profit rating organization essentially, where they come out and do a questionnaire with the Fire Department in terms of updates for equipment and, you know, the type of ladders, the amount of firefighters we have, whether it's a full-service, twenty-four-hour-a-day department. And their last look-back was four years ago, so the representative was quite impressed with the fact that our Fire Department in that period of time has gone to full-time, seven days a week, has not only one ambulance, but now is under contract for a second, and the number of medical response calls were discussed, and the improvement of the equipment and so forth. So, they're going to issue a report in early January, to which I'll be a recipient, and overall, the idea is that they inform insurance, property, and casualty carriers on, you know, the status of fire protection in a respective community. So, it won't dribble down directly to a homeowner's policy amount, but you might see some minor decrease in rates overall. The other major thing that happened in the last couple of weeks was that I received a call from the State 911 Office, EOP's Under-Secretary, Frank Posniak. I mentioned to you that I had seen or spoken with him a couple of weeks ago, just to get some information about grant funding that was available for dispatch services, and as a result of that phone call, Frank had sent me an email giving me the names of two people in his staff to reach out to eventually if I wanted more information about grant funding, as well as just the operations side of things in general. And before I even had a chance to reach out to either one of them, the woman named Christine Wingfield called and actually came out to Town Hall on Friday and sat with me and the Police and Fire Chiefs discussing an opportunity whereby East Long Meadow would join a much larger community that is in the process of consolidating its dispatch service, combining police and fire in a very large setting. It's not Chicopee, and I'm not at liberty to say right now which community it is, only because the staff that work there are not aware of this proposal to East Long Meadow. But if we were to, I will investigate it, and if we decide to join that community, it presents a tremendous opportunity for that community to apply for up to fifteen million dollars in incentive and development grants, so that all of our costs would go away. Sounds too good to be true, which is why I have to sit down and think about it, but there would be no access fee, all the equipment would be paid for, and so on and so forth. So, that's just the overture, that's the lure, and we'll check it out, all the details of that in the upcoming week or two. I've already reached out to the mayor of this other community and been connected with the Fire Commissioner there, so that Fire Commissioner and our Fire Chief and Police Chief and I will have a further conversation in the very near future. Today, I attended a regional roundtable sponsored by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I went because I think it's necessary to go. It took, you know, a little bit longer than I would have liked to have been away from my desk, frankly, just because of paperwork that never stops, but it was essentially a very informational and interesting couple of hours. The focus was on shared municipal services, and I went because one of the topics was going to be shared health, and we were talking about a regional commitment with Long Meadow, and they omitted that for some reason. And the other issue that was of interest to me was a solar working group. So, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is working on developing a solar bylaw, which is probably a little too late for some of the smaller communities around here that have already had solar moratoriums and whatnot, but the concept is interesting, and our Planning Director actually is a member of that subcommittee. So, and that, I was just telling Jeannie as we were waiting to convene, most of the communities there were really small ones. I felt like an urban princess, because the two guys next to me were from Plainfield, and one said, "Oh, we have, you know, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine people in town." And I thought, you know, I can kind of relate to that from past experience, but, and then there were Middlefield, and there was a lengthy discussion about the combined police services from Blanford and Chester, if you remember last summer.
Yes.
All the policemen in Blanford resigned.
That's right.
And now they've merged, and it was a discussion about the governance documents that allowed the two communities to merge. So, it was interesting on an intellectual level, if nothing else, if it's not directly related to our experience. It made me happy that this town chose to go with a charter form of government, because it kind of simplifies the overall operations, I think. And lastly, the good news, well, not lastly, second to the last, I know you're aware that the Mass School Building Association did invite our school superintendent and business manager to their board meeting tomorrow morning in Boston, at which they anticipate the board is going to take a vote inviting East Long Meadow into the core grant program. And so, the superintendent was obviously very happy about that. I know there's been a lot of work done already by a group of people to get the project to this point, so they're very gratified to be invited. And then there's going to be an orientation session following the vote, at which Mr. Smith and Pam Blair will attend, and then report back to us on the next necessary steps for following through on that. And I have had an opportunity to consolidate all of the outstanding departmental reports, so we're about ready to publish the two thousand and eighteen annual report. I'm sure you've been waiting for it for a few months, because I know it's usually out much sooner than this, but there was a delay, obviously, with Marge LaRocca's retirement. She was waiting for a couple of final articles from different departments. So, that's all been prepared, and I proofread it last night, made some corrections, and should be going to publication soon, so it's a very interesting document, because it does contain a wealth of information. Some of the department heads did a great job putting their information together. And we are still working on the reorganization of Town Hall, the offices. I've deemed that one of our fellows in the DPW, Joe Dunn, is our space designer du jour. And so, he's been out with his measuring stick, and we've been trying to look at floor plans and figure out which offices the public needs that we would like to have on the first floor, and whether they'll fit in certain places, but, you know, I feel as though department heads deserve a private office, each one of them, and I don't want to squish, lack of a better word, I don't want to put too many people in one room. I don't know the industry standard off the top of my head, but there's a certain number of square feet that every individual, particularly at that management level, if not everyone for that matter, should have. So, I'm just not sure how it's all going to play out, but I've been speaking to the individual department heads, one-on-one, just to kind of set the tone and get their objections or their thumbs-up version as to the potential relocation. So, that's moving along, and I know it was an issue that the council wanted to have addressed, so I'm working on that.
You've been busy. Thank you. Any questions?
You're welcome.
I have a question through the chair. While they're working on allocating more space for our employees, has anybody put a value on that space where IT is right now, currently on the first floor? In other words, the amount of square footage, or how that could coincide with this possible move?
Yes, the council president and I happened upon Ryan Quinby a couple of weeks ago. A couple of weeks ago, at least, and talked about that. His estimate for moving the IT, the server, up to the water tower, is where he thinks it should be as an optimum location. I mean, he said anywhere from two to five-hundred thousand dollars to do that. So, we've asked him to make it one of, a component of his capital project request for this upcoming fiscal year, and we'll see. And the difficulty is the fiber connections, the way he was describing it to me, it's in that server room, all four quadrants of the town are connected, so it would be a matter of restructuring all of that fiber. And the office itself isn't great. I mean, Joe and I went in there yesterday, and it essentially is a, it's windowless, and it's, so it's not like the most attractive space for anybody to be in full-time, but it would free up space, if for nothing else, a place to store files that would be centrally located for any office that might be on the first floor that couldn't accommodate file cabinets in their own space. So, but I don't think it's going to happen for a bit, at best.
Yeah, I didn't realize the price tag was in the neighborhood that you were speaking about. I just know that real estate in the Town Hall is valuable, because we're limited, and it's moving things around, and, I mean, to move the equipment upstairs is just basically rerunning the wiring and then taking the equipment and putting it on the elevator and bringing it up, but where this cost is coming from, and if there's grants available at this time, I wouldn't know. I just wondered if it had been looked at, and it certainly has.
Well, I don't want to hold that number, Ryan, to that number, because it was really just in a casual conversation, it wasn't even a meeting that we had determined in advance, but, and I'm sure, I mean, I suppose the more research and due diligence that's done about it, it might come down, but that's where he would like to relocate it to, as opposed to the second floor of Town Hall.
Yeah, and there might be another reason down the road, rather than just trying to free up space that we have to cross that bridge, but it's down the road. Right now, I guess we can work on doing what we have to do to make better use of the space that we have, so.
If I could just jump in and add to that, when Mary says water tower, it wouldn't be on the water tower per se, which would be a little kind of counterproductive, but there is a Verizon building there that's now vacated by Verizon that is available to the town, and it's the type of facility that would lend itself to putting the head end room in that building, so that's where, that would be his first choice.
Comes down to geographical location.
Right.
Very favorable spot because of the height of the town.
Right, yeah.
Question through the chair. With regards to the public protection classification, you mentioned that a report will be coming out in January?
Yes, sir.
And I think it'd be beneficial to all the townsfolk to know what that classification is, so they can address it with their own insurers, to see if there's any sort of reduction in their home insurance.
Sure, I'm happy to share.
If they're not aware of it, they may not pursue it, and that's my concern.
Yep, happy to do that, Mr. O'Connor.
Mary, you mentioned the department heads and the need for space and everything, and I'm sure that the number-one issue that I know I, from the council, are concerned about is the service to the clients, and trying to get the people that come in from the outside serviced in as close an area as possible, so they don't have to go all over the building.
Yes.
And I know you, I know you know that, I know you've mentioned that before, I just want to state that for the record, very important.
And I totally, a hundred percent agree with that. The problem as it exists right now is that we can't get all of the offices to which the public needs fairly regular access on the first floor.
Sure.
So, and I didn't really want to move people piecemeal. I had this grand idea that, let's just do it all at once and get the disruption over with, but I don't think it's going to work out. I think we're going to have to do it piecemeal, until we figure out the space restrictions.
Anything else? Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to move out of order now to Old Business, C. Two. An update of the Town Manager Search Screening Committee, because our consultant and members of our Town Manager Search Screening Committee are present this evening, and I would like to give them our earliest opportunity on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of moving out of order to Old Business, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. We can now move to item C. Two. And we have Mr. Bernie Lynch with us, as well as Mr. Andy Frazier, who chaired our Town Manager Search Committee. As well with us this evening are most of the members of the search committee, Deb Milliken, Larry Levine, Con Roche, and Richard Gibbo. And again, on behalf of the council, we thank you very much for the efforts that you've devoted to this very important task, and I feel as though right now it's like the Oscar night, we're waiting for the envelope with the names.
Well, thank you for those kind words, and I was going to say, later in my remarks, we appreciate you very much, having faith in us to participate in part of this whole process. It was a very interesting process, we put a lot of time into it, and all the committee members made, you know, a significant contribution, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we had two meetings. First meeting was November thirteenth. We met with Mr. Lynch, our consultant. He explained the process that he uses for the screening committee, what questions need to be asked, and provided some guidance as it relates to the committee charge that you developed for us. We then, excuse me, went into executive session to discuss the field of applicants and came to an agreement on who or which of the applicants would be interviewed on November twenty-fifth. Mr. Lynch also provided us with a draft set of questions and assigned some homework to the committee to review them and make comments, revisions, as we felt necessary. We also put in some specifics that deal directly with East Long Meadow issues outside of the normal questions that people would be expected to answer in an interview. Do you have anything else for the November thirteenth? Okay. So, the second meeting was Interview Day, November twenty-fifth. We met for about an hour prior to the beginning of the interviews to finalize the details of the interview and the process. We also had a discussion on the three most pressing issues that a new town manager would face in East Long Meadow, and they are HR, a new high school, and working within a charter. And we had some, we had some questions specifically aimed at those topics. Eight applicants were interviewed for approximately seventy-five minutes each. We had nine scheduled originally, one had withdrew. In addition to those questions, as I said, we came up with these three specific ones, and those were designed also to flush out what kind of homework the applicants did prior to the interview, and I must say, some of that homework was quite impressive. At the conclusion of each applicant's interview, they were given time to ask questions of the committee and share any thoughts that they had. Once we completed the interviews, we deliberated for quite some time over the results of the interview and came to an agreement on four applicants to move forward to the council. And the length of our meeting was ten-and-a-half hours that day.
It was a marathon.
Yeah, yeah, it was.
Did we feed you?
Well, yes. Very well. Kathleen Hill took care of, no, yep, no, she took care of the lunch and the coffee, all the required necessities, so, yeah, thank you, thank you. That's, that's all I have for the twenty-fifth meeting. I'll turn it over to Mr. Lynch.
Thanks, Andy. Let me thank the council for choosing Community Paradigm to assist you with this search. It was a great opportunity for us to come out and learn a little bit about the town, quite a bit about the town, and had the opportunity to work with a great committee. You really did a great job in picking this committee. They came to the table, our first meeting, the one thing that Andy didn't tell you is our first meeting, which usually lasts about two hours, I think we were there for three hours, and then we had to leave, because the building was closing. Carried on a little bit more as we were walking out the door, and then went our separate ways, but it was clear to me that you had a committee that was really committed to the task, and so we set up some extra time at that second meeting to spend a little bit more time together. As Andy said, we spent about ten-and-a-half hours going through the interviews and discussing the candidates, and I think we have four very good candidates for you to consider. So, we're going to hand these out and walk you through a little bit what we have.
Thank you.
What we provide to the council, or to the governing body of any of the communities that we work with, is this package of information about the candidates. What we've given you are the resumes of the four candidates, their couple of letters. We've also given you a summary of comments that we received from their references. We did, and we've, and I can tell you that we did background checks, query checks on all of them. They were all clear and clean. We do preliminary background work before we even get to the committee, the screening committee, so that we can flag any problem candidates ahead of time. So, all of these candidates come from solid backgrounds. What we do with the references is we drill down, we spend quite a bit of time talking to them. Sharon Clarity, who's not here with us tonight, but she met with all of you to kick this process off, has a background in journalism, so she has that skill that reporters have of digging in and making people say things that they may not want to actually say. So, she's able to pull information out from the references themselves. So, those comments are summarized in here for you. What we try to do, too, is get some anecdotes from the references about specific projects or specific issues that the candidates have dealt with, to give you some sense of their style and what they've encountered in the past and how they work with the organization. So, the four candidates that we have for you are, beginning alphabetically, are Thomas Guarino. I'm just going to give you a very brief summary of each one and let you review the resume and background yourself. Tom Guarino is a recently left position of Town Administrator in the town of Bourne after fifteen years in that position. Bourne is a, is a complex community with some complex organization, a very large community right at the entrance of Cape Cod, and he comes with quite a bit of experience in municipal management. Attorney Mary McNally, who you clearly know, she sits here tonight with us. Mary comes with, again, experience in municipal government. Here is your interim, but also in the Navy and County of Hampton, as well as the City of Springfield Parking Authority, where she served in a management capacity, and of course, extensive legal experience. And so, we have Mary McNally. NEFT, we have Ronald Sanangelo. Ron Sanangelo is currently the Town Administrator in South, the Town Manager in Southbridge, another council manager form of government. He's been there about four years. Prior to that, he was in Hanson, Massachusetts, for two years, and prior to that, he came out of the state of Connecticut, where he served in the legislature, he was a mayor, and he also worked in for private enterprise. And he comes with, again, with some good municipal experience, particularly with the council manager form. I will tell you that Ron is being put forward to you as a finalist. However, he was, within the last few days, offered the position of Town Administrator in another community, and we discussed this, and he would like to stay in the mix here for the time being. Obviously, it's a somewhat awkward situation, but he needs to determine what's in the, you know, where he feels he can make the most contribution, so, so he's, we will know soon enough on him. And then lastly, Jennifer Wallowitz. Jennifer has been in the town of South Hadley as the Assistant Town Administrator, Deputy Town Administrator, for approximately fifteen years. She actually began as Personnel Officer and Chief Procurement Officer, has worked her way up to the deputy position and feels, and obviously the committee believes, she's ready to move on to the next position, which is a Town Manager position. And so, she comes with extensive HR, municipal administration experience as well. And so, she comes with extensive HR, municipal administration experience as well. You had 21 applicants total, which is roughly—
Typical.
Typical. It is typical. In fact, as you know, we just completed the search in the neighboring community of Long Meadow, and they had 21 applicants as well, 21 different applicants, but 21 applicants. So, that's about where we're getting. I often tell the story, the most applicants we've ever received for a position of this sort, I think it was Amherst, where we had 80-some-odd people. But 40 of them thought they were applying to be the town manager of Amherst, Ohio. So, Indeed.com, which sweeps up ads, I picked that one up. They ran it on Indeed.com and we were getting things from people looking at Amherst, Ohio. So, in any event, that's what we have. I've also provided you with a draft set of questions for you to consider. We have interviews scheduled for next Wednesday, beginning at 4:00, I believe.
4:00 is when we are meeting as a council with you to kind of—
Go through the process.
Process.
Right. And then I think the first one, we're going to plan on doing at 4:30.
4:30.
Right. So, we will move forward to schedule all of those interviews. Between now and then, you all have my contact information. If you don't, I can give it to you or I'm sure—
We have it.
The council president can. Please feel free to call me with any questions about the process or about the candidates. If there's things you want to know that you would like to discuss with me, that's the best way to do it. And that includes this weekend. Feel free, Saturday or Sunday, just give me a call. The questions I've given you, if there's something I'm missing that you would like to drill down into a little bit more, let me know.
We can email them.
Just email me the questions and I will add them in, phrase them for you, and then we can discuss on next Wednesday how we proceed with that. But, you know, it's in our interest certainly to make sure that you are happy and that you get the service that you want. And whatever we can do to make that happen is important to us.
And I assume at this point now, these four names can be disclosed to the public?
They just were.
They just were.
Yes. Yes, they have. And all of the candidates were—you knew, right?
Yes.
All four candidates were notified that their names are going public.
Does the council have questions?
I do.
Go.
Bernie, through the list that you provided for a town manager interview questions, if we do not see a question that we would like to ask, you would want to email from us to add it to the list?
That might be the easiest way to do it so we know specifically what questions are there. So, once we meet on Wednesday and decide what the process is going to be of how that's going to take place, they can either be assigned out or make sure that we know ahead of time. If you're looking for us to do some of the questioning for you, that's up to the council. If it's something that's drilling down into one of these, I want to be clear that these are questions that don't—as candidates are being interviewed and answering the questions, you should have follow-up questions that go beyond what's on paper.
That's my second question.
Yeah.
What do we do there?
Yeah, absolutely.
And those can be—not to interrupt, but those can be spontaneous?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. You know, you want a common ground in which to evaluate the candidates so that you have that. But beyond that, they each have different—they're bringing different experiences in for you so that you can make a choice. And you want to recognize that individuality of each candidate and the skills they bring forward that you can then drill into.
Right. Good.
Anyone else? So, we're clear that if you have comments regarding questions or questions that you would like to ask, if they can be directed directly by phone or email to Bernie. Good?
Good. Just two quick things, if I could. If I didn't say it before, it was a pleasure working with Bernie Lynch, very knowledgeable guy, very easy guy to talk to. So, it was very smooth in that regard. Second thing I'll say is Connor Shea stepped up and assumed the role of the clerk, job nobody wants.
Ever.
But he did an excellent job with the minutes. He really did.
Great. Thank you, Connor.
I may be taking Connor with me to see who I can—
Yeah, I'm sure.
That nailed it. Great.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in another week.
See you on Wednesday. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Okay. Then we can move—thank you, everyone. Move back into our normal order here, and we are at number six, approval of minutes. And in the packet you have the November 26th open session minutes. If you haven't had a chance to review them, I would ask that you do that now. And then, if there are no additions or deletions or alterations, then we can move to accept.
I have an addition and a clarification. On page two, the report, about two-thirds of the way down the page, it states, "Councillor O'Connor stated that the enterprise and revolving funds were not included in the report." I also asked and stated the capital report.
Okay.
So, I would like the minister to reflect that. We—I also spoke about getting the capital report as well.
I remember that.
So, we're adding capital to that.
So, through the chair.
Yes.
Same page two, under Financial Matters, second paragraph says, "Miss Menard"—
Stated.
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 It's supposed to be stated.
Yeah.
Just one misspelling. Other than that, I was good with the rest of it.
Anyone else? So, I will entertain a motion to accept the November 26th open session minutes with the amendments as just noted.
So, moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No, Ralph.
It was seconded by Tom.
Oh.
Just for clarification.
Those opposed, please say nay. And any abstentions?
Right.
One. So, passes five zero, one. Okay, moving on. Do we have anything, Jeanne, under Communication, Correspondence, and Announcements?
No.
Okay. And we are able to—oh, boy. 6:30, yes, we can do this one. Proposed under public hearings, proposed zone change at Rear Peas Road, also known as parcel 33-1-0, from Residence AA to Industrial/Industrial Garden Park, continued from September 10th, 2019. The reason for this public hearing is to continue the public hearing from September 10th, as I just noted. Council members from left to right are councilors Richards, Page, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. Clerk will now read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 10, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the media room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a zoning change at Rear Peas Road, parcel 33-1-0, a 21.26 plus or minus acre site from Residence AA to an Industrial/Industrial Garden Park zoning district. Information relating to this amendment is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Okay. At this point in the public hearing, the petitioner will have an opportunity to speak on behalf of the matter. However, the petitioner has asked that the hearing not go forward this evening and rather be continued to January 28th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. And I should say, per the request of the attorney representing the petitioner. So, at—based on that, I will entertain a motion to move this hearing to January 28th.
I move to continue the public hearing for proposed zone change at Rear Peas Road, parcel 33-1-0, from Residence AA to Industrial/Industrial Garden Park, to January 28th, 2020, at 6:30 PM.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor—
Further discussion?
Further discussion, yes. I'm sorry.
I know it's customary that we continue. This is a zone change, as I stated before. I don't think it makes any sense. I don't think it makes any sense to continue it. I don't think it's going to change our minds of switching from Residence Double A to an industrial district. I understand that our attorney has asked us to do this so that the planning board can have an opportunity to go through a project that's been submitted for a site plan there. I just—I don't agree with the continuance. I don't agree with us back in September not taking a vote on it. But that's strictly, like I said, I just wanted it out there on the record.
Fair enough. So, I will go back to—and I apologize for jumping forward that quickly—entertaining a motion to move this hearing to January 28th at 2020 at 6:30.
Question?
Still have questions?
Yes.
Okay.
One question through the chair.
The silence always throws me until I start talking.
We had a motion for a second.
Go ahead.
The attorney's recommendation, again, could we review what the attorney's recommendation was regarding continuing this public hearing and why?
Our attorney or theirs?
Our attorney.
It's Mr. Martin who's requesting this continuance, not Mr. Menard.
The first continuance through the chair. The first continuance, Mr. Menard spoke up and said that he would agree with it.
Right.
And I think the thought process was, until it's resolved at the planning board level, then they would like us to continue it. So, that way, that process is done before we make a decision. I understand what he was saying. I personally don't agree with it. I don't think it's going to change anything. But I think that's what he was looking for and let the planning board finish theirs and then let us vote on that.
So, if we vote to continue the public hearing, it will be put back on planning board's desk and then the planning board will make a recommendation to us—
It's not—
—based on their findings?
They're there. It's there now.
This public hearing is completely separate. This is a zone change. The planning board has a site plan review for a solar farm. It's two different things, but they're still intermixed on the same parcel.
Planning board has already made its recommendation to us on the zone change?
Yes.
Because if they have already made that recommendation on the zone change after our attorney suggested it be delayed, and it was delayed, and they made the presentation to us, then I would—I would agree with you that it sounds like there would be no need to extend it any further.
Question through the chair. Mary, do you have any information you can add?
Well, I do. And it just came late this afternoon. I received a call from the planning director requesting some time with council, at least or maybe just with the president or vice or any subcommittee that you want to designate, to meet with the planning board. And I think it has to be in the executive session because the matter's in litigation.
Right.
Because I think they're looking for some counsel, some direction from the council about the pursuit of an appeal, as I think was discussed last time or one of the prior meetings. I think Councillor Kane, you made that—you asked that question.
I did.
And then talk about perhaps a council with, you know, specialized experience in land matters and things of that nature. So, I think they're looking for some direction from you. So, whether they've already opined in one respect on the zone change per se, I think they're looking for some more guidance. And I apologize for not putting that in my report, but they did ask today. I was intending to ask you for some time.
So, when are they meeting next? And is it their understanding that they'd want us at the next meeting, some of us there?
Yeah, they're—I think they're meeting on January 9th, I want to say. And I didn't know—that was my dilemma. I didn't know if we would have time to—if the council would have another meeting in order to schedule an executive session in advance of their next planning date.
Our January meetings are the 14th and the 28th, is that right?
So, so what do you work out? But it can't be—I mean, I don't think it can be discussed appropriately in open session because—
That part's just super.
So, that was my dilemma with not bringing it up earlier.
So, my question would be, if we intended on meeting with the planning board at their request, do we deny this public hearing at this point in time? Or do we accept it and then meet with the planning board?
Well, if we meet with the planning board, which seems—I can't see a reason why we wouldn't meet with the planning board. But the outcome of that meeting may not necessitate a hearing on the 28th, may or may not. And so, I'd be hesitant to deny it. I would rather table it and take no action on it. And then, if we see that one is warranted, well, based on when we meet, it still needs two weeks' notice to go to post for—
For a new public hearing?
Or a continued one? Do you—
Continued, you just continue it, but it's only listed once.
Okay.
And your continuations are in the minutes on the record.
Well, conceivably, it could still happen on the 28th, the hearing. So, what's the council's pleasure?
Well, there's a motion already on the table. It's already been seconded to continue to January 28th. I think we take a vote on that. Like I said, through myself, I just—I just had an issue with the zone change, that's all. I do understand our town attorney. I do understand them asking for more time. I would just be hesitant after January 28th of doing any more extensions. So, that's my thoughts.
In view of this new information, I also would—I wanted to agree with Ralph, but I would also agree that in view of the new information, we should extend.
Extend it to the 28th.
Yeah, and I would agree with that, too. I think Ralph brings up a good point.
Call to vote.
Motion's been made and seconded and now called. All those in favor of extending this hearing until January 28th, 2020, at 6:30, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions, we have motion carries. Okay, we are now to the proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee per Article 9, Section 2 of the Charter. This will be a first reading. And so, the public hearing is open. The reason for this public hearing is to address a proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee per Article 9, Section 2 of the Charter. Council members from left to right are councilors Richards, Page, Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. I'll ask the clerk to read the legal notice into the record.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on December 10, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the media room of the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee per Article 9, Section 2 of the East Long Meadow Town Rule Charter. Information relating to this bylaw is available for review by the public in the town clerk's office and on the town's website, www.eastlongmeadowma.gov. For the council, Jean Quagliti, town clerk, clerk of the council.
Thank you. The council will now present the reasons and rationale for the proposed bylaw. Do we have someone from the bylaw committee that would like to speak on behalf of this?
Sure.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. This proposed bylaw was put together by our committee over a period of a couple of months and much discussion. We also found a place for it in the existing bylaws under Chapter 10, Special Committees and Commissions, where this is where it would go. I don't see any—any members of the public here to ask—to answer any questions of. And I think it's pretty— I think it's pretty plain the way it's written, and I would look for really input from the council as to any, any additional changes.
Okay, thank you for that. We, as I said, the next step, or as Mr. Henry said, would be for the public to offer input. We do have some folks in the audience, is there anyone who'd like to speak on this behalf? There's no obligation, but we have to stay with the protocol. All right, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Should it be read into the first reading, should be, this should be read?
Has to be read.
Yes. It's not in my cheat sheet, sorry. Okay, Pat, would you please read?
Yes, proposed bylaw for the town of East Longmeadow. Purpose: This bylaw sets forth-
Special committees and commissions.
General guidelines for the establishment of a charter review committee as mandated in Article nine, section two of the East Longmeadow Home Rule Charter. Establishment: The committee must be established no later than July first of the year ending in zero, as required by the charter. The committee must submit its report to the town council not less than one year from the date the committee is established. Scope: The scope of the committee's charge is described in the charter as allowed under Mass General Law's chapter forty-three B. Membership: The committee shall be comprised of seven registered voters of the town, with the following restrictions: No more than two members can be current town councilors; no more than two additional members can be former charter commission members; no more than two additional members can be employees of the town. Appointment: The council president will appoint committee members under the authority described in Article two, section three of the charter.
Thank you. So the public portion of the hearing is closed, and now the council has an opportunity to discuss the matter, and then, as required, we will vote to move this for a second reading on January fourteenth.
Kathy? If I could go first?
Sure.
I missed my opportunity, I missed my opportunity to point out that one of the reasons that it is written in this way is because there is a lot of detail in the charter, and we cannot change the charter, nor did we want to change the charter, so we wanted to be sure that everything that we put down here fit within the charter. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, as I look at the lineup, no more than two members can be current town councilors, we have town councilors-
We've morphed.
-that are also charter commission members, and aren't we considered employees of the town? So theoretically-
I know, we're a classic hybrid model.
You got it. So I'm assuming that all can be worked out, but I just wanted to, to raise that point that-
Are we employees in the same way as a forty-hour-a-week employee, or are we, because we gain a, take a stipend, is that enough to call us employees?
I'm not sure that you're-
Or special? Yeah, I think we might be special municipal.
That would help.
We are special.
So, under the charter, any elected members of boards, committees, or commissions are considered town employees. That's written actually in the charter, but I believe, through the chair, I believe when the bylaw committee was talking about this, that when you decide to put your name into run, you would say, I'd like to be on this as a-
You have to designate your place, right.
-town employee, or, in that way there, at that time, it may be me and Pat are on it as town councilors, and Marilyn's on it as a town employee.
Yes, but what I would also like to caution, since many of us were satisfied multiple roles in these definitions, I would caution against all seven, or the majority of the seven being comprised of this council right now, or, I think it behooves us to involve non-council members, and yes, this is a unique situation because of how some of our roles have morphed since the inception of the charter. Pat?
We struggled with the wording for this, and there are ways to describe it, but it would take paragraph after paragraph-
Right.
...of legal ease, and we felt that since the council president will be the appointing authority, and the council president understands these issues, that the council president would see to it that Ralph and I decided which-
Category.
-category we want to represent, and you could accept that or not. Ralph does make a good point, though, in my opinion, that perhaps there could be something added to the effect that no more than X members of the-
Current council participate, right.
Well, I guess that there'd be-
Two members.
Yeah, see, it gets, it gets tough, but no more than two-thirds of the council members, no, two-thirds of the commission members can be councilors, former councilors, former, former charter members, or employees of the town.
I think at that point, we leave it up to the-
That'd be the only solution I could come up with.
Yeah, we did talk about this for quite a bit.
At length.
Yeah. Through the chair, I just want to comment on the subject matter of, of employees, and I did reach out to the AG, it was some time ago, and they did agree that we are viewed as employees of the town.
Kathy, do we want to, I mean, it says the committee shall be comprised of seven registered voters, and then it goes on to give the restrictions, but it never indicates two members at large, two, I mean, you're talking about councilors, commission members, and employees, but what about our town folks? I mean, do we want to, a minimum of two town residents that are not councilors, commission members, town employees? I, you know, I know that that could certainly be factored in if you're doing this election, but I, do we want to include something like that?
Through the chair, again, as Pat mentioned, and I was a member of that committee, we did talk in length about this issue.
Okay.
And what we came up with for a compromise is that there's still seven registered voters, and it's no more than two. So it can be one.
Right.
So we, we encourage the residents to step up and be members of this committee.
Absolutely.
But it can only be, the wording was difficult for us, but no more than two members, so it could be one member, or zero, of the council, or the former charter commission, or town employees.
Got it, okay. I just want to make sure that-
Right.
-the folks know that we're not trying to exclude them.
No, absolutely not.
Absolutely.
I have that same concern.
I think after the second hearing, reading, rather, we would, it would be necessary to publicize this in an article in the reminder, seeking applicants and stressing that we're looking for registered voters to help with this.
Through the chair.
Yes.
As long as we're limiting the number of council members in, in these committees are going to be made up of X amount of people, then it's going to open the doors for the balance to be residents of East Longmeadow.
Yeah.
Through the chair, two things. One, as we go forward, this being a bylaw, former charter commission members, over time, that's going to dissipate. Whether it be ten years from now or twenty years from now, the original charter members-
Will not be, that won't be an issue.
Exactly. So I'm hoping this bylaw stays for a hundred years, and we don't have to worry about that.
And then those restrictions will be a moot issue.
Exactly. My second point, I know we had said this was going to go under chapter ten, I would just like to point out, under the sections, we could create a new ten-point-zero-nine-zero specifically for this, and that way there, it's-
Correct.
Has its location all set out, it's going to be ten-point-nine-zero, and that's where it's going to go.
Okay. I would like to offer an amendment to pick up on the concerns of the council, that following the statement that no more than two members can be councilors, no more than two members can be charter commission, no more than two members can be employees, we add another bullet that says, at least two members shall be members who are not currently town councilors, former charter commission members, or employees of the town.
That's fair.
It covers it.
I would second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to add the additional bullet to the restrictions.
Pat, would you just please read it again, so we get it accurately for Jackie?
At least two members shall be members who are not current town councilors, former charter commission members, or employees, or current employees of the town.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye. Opposed? That amendment passes? Is there any other discussion?
Would the chair agree that we should put, as, as a lead-in for this, that it would be under section ten-point-oh-nine, as Ralph has suggested?
Right. Yes, exactly. Goes without-
And we did talk about that in our committee meeting.
Where it's to be placed, right.
And we, we agreed that it should be the current bylaw format, not the general code format, because who knows how long it'll take the general code, and we're asking the town to approve a bylaw to be added to our current existing bylaws, so they can find it where, where needs to be.
I have a question about publication. Now, may I direct the-
Yes.
Clerk, okay. We, we had a public notice for tonight's hearing. For the second reading, will there be an additional public notice?
There's only the legal notice for the public hearing, when it's continued, you don't do another legal notice. There also was the proposed bylaw self-published in the reminder for the charter, too, so, but we wouldn't, you don't normally publish another legal notice for continuation.
Okay, because I'm just trying to figure out how we can get our message out, so that we can have some more people here for public hearings. I just didn't know whether, you know, because this is important.
This is sad.
You know, that's all, I was just curious whether, and I know you mentioned the, the actual committee itself, there will be a public notice, but we have a lot of public hearings with no attendance. Always a struggle.
Kind of indicative of society today.
I know, I know, I know.
Just off to you this motion.
Yes.
Okay. Would you like me to read it?
It's sitting up here, not in the audience.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion at this time to continue the public hearing for the proposed bylaw to establish a charter review committee per Article nine, section two of the charter, to January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, at six forty-five PM, for a second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. And now we are moving to number nine, orders of the day. A, licensing matters. The approval of the two thousand and twenty license renewals, this is an annual requirement, and it comes before us as the licensing authority every year at this time. You have a spreadsheet noting all of the licenses and their particular categories, and the fee involved with that license. Genie, did you want to say anything about this in general?
In general, the suggested motion is to approve the licenses contingent upon compliance with all town departments. About a month or so ago, we sent this list to the fire chief, the police chief, the building commissioner, the collector treasurer, and the health director, just to make sure there were no problems with any compliance issues with any of these, and we did get back some feedback from the collector, which I sent letters to, letting the businesses know that they need to be in compliance with their taxes before they get their licenses, and some of it, Kevin Duquette, the building commissioner, and we're keeping abreast on who's, who needs to be inspected, and I've made a couple of calls today, myself, to a couple of businesses, to remind them they need to get in touch with the building commissioner, so we're in constant, constant contact. So once these are approved, contingent upon compliance with the town departments, I will physically hold on to those licenses until I know that they've met all the, all the stipulations they need to with all the town departments.
Good. Okay. Any other questions, then, on this list?
So, through the chair, if they don't come into compliance until after the new year, then they don't have a license?
Then they can't serve alcohol, or-
Or be, do whatever their license to do.
Right.
Common Vic would be-
And it's always a push for the building commissioner to get these done. It's usually the usual suspects that take their time or late, but they, they, they get it done, so.
So all of the licenses will be signed, but the non-compliant licensees will be held until-
Until someone says-
-everything is cleared.
And through the chair, they will be notified, Ma, I'm making phone calls and sending letters.
It would be, I mean, at some point, maybe the time will come where we have to address the issue of the usual suspects. If we have to chase and chase and chase, year after year, maybe some conversation will need to be had with the licensee in front of us to say, you know, this isn't going to be tolerated going forward.
Right. Because I imagine the town resources that have been put into just chasing after all of these delinquent licenses, or troublesome licenses.
And in terms of our building commissioner, he makes the initial check, points out the deficiencies, reminds and reminds, and then still has to go back and-
Right, right.
-account for the, the changes, so there is a lot of hours of employee work behind this.
So is this something where it's typical, they get their license, and then three months later, there's a deficiency, they already have their license, and they basically drag it out, until we hold them under the gun again, or?
No, well, the inspections are annual inspections that the building commissioner has to do, so.
Through the chair.
A common vic, though, would, could be subject to random health inspections.
Health inspections, right.
Or is subject to.
Right, and that's why Amy does get that list, too, from me.
Right, of course.
I was just going to add, sitting on that committee last year, these people that are requesting licenses, that wait till the last minute, as Kathy stated, some of them have issues, and there isn't enough time to repair those issues. So if they wait till the end, and, and there isn't enough time, and we go into two thousand and twenty, they're not granted that, and that's where we're saved by the contingency paragraph in there.
There's how many licenses here, a hundred and forty, did you tell me?
Something like that, right.
But the number of usual suspects, to use your, it's a small number, though.
It's a handful.
Okay.
I would say a half dozen.
Okay. All right, then, if there's no questions, I'll entertain that motion.
I'll read it. I move to approve the two thousand and twenty license renewals as referred to in Exhibit A, contingent upon all licensees being in compliance with all town departments.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Also, on the matter of licensing, we have before us tonight a one-day liquor license request from the Masonic Temple for December twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, from four PM to eleven PM for a Christmas party. That application and backup information is in your packet. All of the relevant parties have signed off on it. If there is no discussion, then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for December twenty-fourth, two thousand and nineteen, from four PM to eleven PM for a Christmas party. I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. In the same vein, a one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for January eleventh, two thousand and twenty, from six to eleven PM, for the purpose of a birthday party. Again- Again, that packet, that's in your packet with all of the relevant information.
I'll make the motion to approve a one-day liquor license in the Masonic Temple for January 11, 2020, 6:00 to 11:00 PM for a birthday party.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Moving to financial matters, we have the quarterly budget report for FY '20 Enterprise and Revolving Funds, and we have our Finance Director, Sarah Menard, with us this evening.
Thank you. So, in your packet, you will see the revolving funds, which we'll start with. So, the first one is the Solid Waste Revolving Fund. Currently, it's about 43.77% through revenue, and at this point in the year, it's as of October 31st, which is only 33% of the year, 33.33. So, actually, our revenue is a bit higher than we originally projected, so that's good. The expenses are only at 19.74%, so currently, the expenses are less than we anticipated. So, overall, we are in a better spot than we anticipated to be at this point in the year. The major purchase that has been made thus far with this account has been the trash bags, followed then by the shred event that we have annually. Any questions?
Pat?
Through the Chair, purchase, OTR purchases. I assume that means other?
Yes.
Purchases. There's a $14,800 actual purchase. Is that, was that the two things you just referenced?
Yes, yes. The shred event was, I want to say, $385, and the rest of it was the trash bags that we purchased, because we do once a year purchase of all of the trash bags, and so that's what that was for.
So you are showing an income item in the 2020 column, 2020 available minus 14,800 to show a budget of zero. Is that, is that accurate, or am I misreading that?
It's not, it's not an income item. So, at the time when we originally did it, that we had separated out, you'll see right above there is another OTR Purchase Services Other.
Yep.
So, the budget for it is actually on the line above it. So, that's something that, as part of my cleanup when I go through, that I typically clean that up.
Oh, okay, so those are related.
So, the 14 goes against the 20.
Okay.
So, it's really not.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. That's fine.
Any other questions on the solid waste?
Yes, I have a question through the Chair. Item 511, it states, it states that the actual to date is 3,626, available 16,13390, percent used, zero. So, maybe the report needs to be revised.
This was a download from Munis, just straight Munis, because I didn't have time to make any adjustments. So, I'll see what's going on, why it's showing that in the percentage, because it shouldn't have shown that. But the 18.35 right below it is the correct percentage. Do you see that?
Yeah.
So, I'm not really sure why it showed it on the, why that line's off. But I can make sure that for the next time that that.
Yeah, if I can, rather than bring them up each time, there are several other ones within the report that you might want to scrutinize.
I'll double check.
Where they state zero, half the money's been spent.
Next is the Council on Aging Revolving Fund. So, our revenue is at 28.6%, which is slightly lower than we were anticipating. The total expenses are at 23.77, so again, lower than at this point in the year, but still lower than our revenue, so we're actually doing better than anticipated overall. So, currently, it's overall 19.75%, which is excellent. Any questions on the Council on Aging budget?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was looking down.
I'm looking at the revolving funds, fund revenues, and looking at the original budget, 9,500, revised budget, 9,500, actual, 2,700, and then somehow available is 13,600, which those numbers just don't, don't jive.
I don't know what happened. I had lots of issues with the Munis report, actually, and so the actual column, I had to manually redo, and I had to manually redo some of the other aspects of it, because I found some issues, and I had had a call into our Munis support, but I needed to get this to you on Friday, so I did not notice that when I was doing it, because I was busy fixing the other things.
Because we can't have stuff more available than was in the budget.
Right. So, I will look into to see why and follow up with that.
Through the Chair. Object 5307.
Yes.
It says professional technical others. What is that?
So, that would be professional technical services. The other category is, we have multiple categories that fall in the professional technical, such as consultants, auditors, legal. So, they are professionals that have to do, that do services for you, because they need to have certain experience. So, something like this is most likely repair to the freezer, or something of that nature. It's somebody that we had to hire because they have a particular expertise in some area. And so, it could have been something like that. If you want, I can look it up right now as to what exactly the 550 was, but that's what that category is for.
Well, my main concern is that it seems, I don't like catchalls, and I hope this is not a catchall to be all.
No, that's not.
So, you mentioned something that, that just raises a flag to me. You mentioned legal.
Yeah.
Under our new rules, no legal fees can be paid from the revolving funds.
Right, I just was giving you other categories in general that are on our ledger, and so, not that this one has any, because as you can see, it's not even listed. I'm just saying, in general, in all of the general ledger, that's the different kinds of categories that fall in professional technical, that we have those other ones listed out. So, if it is a professional technical service that doesn't fall in one of those categories, it goes into the others. But it's still being defined as professional technical services. So, it's not a catchall or a black hole. That's not what it is.
So, we're not paying any legal fees out of any revolving?
No, we are not.
On that same line, it is interesting. It says that the actual expenses are 550, and there's 850 available, yet the budget is 3,500. So, again, that line.
Yeah, that whole column, I'm not sure what happened there.
Now, I have three or four others on that same line. I don't want to use the Council's.
No, no, that's fine. Like I said, I was having a lot of issues with the.
To see my, improve my understanding.
No problem. The health revolving budget. We currently have received some revenue. We have had no expenses, so we are doing better than anticipated at this point. Any questions?
Another interesting point, it's the 104 spent, 104 available, but the budget was 200. I know it's a piddly thing.
Do the numbers, you think, get skewed when you export from Munis to a different format of reporting?
I'm going to check into what happened with the report. I, I will check into what's wrong with the available in the percentage, but I did double check before sending that the original budget, the revised budget, and the actual are all correct. I double-checked every single line of those. So, those ones, I'm 100% certain.
And the percentage looks correct.
I'm not sure what happened with the available and the percent, because I did not check those columns, which now I'm kicking myself for not doing that. But the others I did do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next is the enterprise funds. So, I put it in the format that I believe is what was requested at the last meeting for the operating budget, so I did do that for all of the enterprise funds. If this is not what you intended when you asked for that format, please tell me. But this is what I thought that you meant when you asked for that. Is that a correct understanding?
You added a column of encumbrance or requisition?
No.
Is that the column?
No, after the year-to-date actual, the column next to it says percent used, so I did the percentage use of the actual.
You put it there, yeah.
The encumbrance and the available was on the old one, and so then the percentage that's to the right of that is the overall, when you take the actual and the encumbrance. So, it was that center column that I added. Is that what you intended?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Good.
And just a general comment through the Chair. When something is abbreviated, or you're using acronyms, or, can you please put a legend in there to tell us what that means?
Can you give me an example, please?
Well, the first one says UB interest.
Okay.
And the fourth one says AR miscellaneous. What do those stand for?
Accounts receivable.
Probably accounts receivable, yeah.
But I'm guessing.
Yeah.
Right, that's just all, it's what we have it titled in the general ledger, so I can.
Those are hardcoded, huh?
Yeah, and, and they only have a limited number of space as to how many digits you can fit in there, so that's why.
No, that's okay. If we have a legend that describes it, that'll be okay. I don't care where you put that, first page or last page.
So, through the Chair, I'm assuming the OTR and the OTH would both be other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just abbreviated differently.
Speaking of other, item 5785, other charges and expenses. That's 64,898 budget. Can you just give an example as to what that might be?
Oh.
Like Tom, there's every time I see something big, it's other.
No, that is the retirement contribution.
Oh, 5785, here.
In the org, if you look at it, so the fund is 12, which is the water, then you will next see the department. The next three digits are your department. 946, that is the retirement contribution. So, if you were to go back to the budget presentation, for example, I always put the department number to the side, so you would see it there. And so, in that retirement department that we have, this is the only line item. So, what happens is that we pay the retirement all in Janu, in July, excuse me, and by paying it all, then, we get a significant discount, so we pay it all then. So, that's why you will see that line on all the enterprise funds already at 100%, because we paid that retirement contribution for the whole year already.
Are there other things that go in there?
Nope.
Or could we call it retirement contributions?
I'd have, I could create a brand-new code, or I could just change it on your report, which would make me have to do it every time.
5785, this one referring to, it's, if that's the only thing in there.
Right, I'll, I'll see what I can do.
Thanks, Tom.
All right, through the Chair, another question. On page one of the Water Enterprise Fund, there's a large amount, number 5382. Again, it's other. I'm assuming that's purchases and services, and then it states again, other.
Yep.
That's 1,175,000?
Yes.
I think that needs to be broken out. Again, it sounds like a catchall.
Springfield Water and Sewer.
Pardon?
It's Springfield Water and Sewer.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it says other.
Yes.
So, why does it say other? Why doesn't it say Springfield Water and Sewer?
Because we don't create a brand-new code for every single vendor or every single type of expense, because otherwise, then our ledger becomes unmanageable. So, we try to give it categories that can give us clear explanation for it, but not outline for every single one. Currently, we have 8,000 codes. So, while I can give descriptions about what they are, if you were to look at what the budget had been submitted, or if you wanted, I can talk to the departments to get an explanation for every line item that they have, to give you kind of a cheat sheet. I don't think it's a good idea to break out and make a separate code for every single vendor that we have.
I would respectfully disagree, disunagree. I think when you have that large an amount of money, it's necessary to break it out and tell us what it is.
When it's that big.
Yeah. So, there might be a cutoff point.
I, I agree with you, but I agree with Tom. Something like this, 60,000, 1,100,000.
Other.
Those are ones that should be a little easier to understand.
If you, are there other questions on the Water Enterprise Fund? On the Sewer Enterprise Fund, we have the retirement payment that was made for 64,898. We also have in Other Purchase Services Other for 5382, the Springfield Water and Sewer, which is a slightly higher percentage than at this point in the year. And the reasoning is that their normal monthly bill for that is 49,000, and we did have one month that the bill was 96,000, and that was due to a $47,000 charge for the WWTP cost that we get charged by Springfield, by Springfield Water and Sewer. Everything else within that sewer department seems to be right on track to where I would expect at this point in the year.
Okay, question. Item number 5144, standby. I believe that's how it reads across?
Yes.
It shows appropriation zero, transfers zero, revised budget zero, but there's money expended out of it?
Mm-hmm.
How do we expend money out of an account that we don't have money in?
So, this standby, so, we budget based on the total for the salary and the non-salary is what had been approved. So, within that, if a department needs to rearrange some of the items within their salary items, then they're allowed to do so. So, one of the aspects of the union contract is if somebody needs to be on standby for, for that, any of those departments, then they are paid a certain amount for any hours for that. It doesn't happen very often in the sewer department, but it did happen to have, to happen this year. So, that's why that then there is some.
So, why didn't we move money into the account?
I typically.
To show the balance as zero.
I typically don't make those movements until later in the year, just because that's a lot of movements that can happen during the year. So, we look at the salary overall. Is it still within? How is that going? The non-salary, how is that within? And then make the movements when it gets a bit closer in the year, because like I said, there are 8,000 accounts. So, if I have to do that, then that's what I'm going to be doing all day, every day.
If you look at the percent used, though, you're at almost 36%, and we're only at 33.3, I think you mentioned, the percent used.
Right, and that's.
It seems over.
The driver is that retirement payment that I pointed out, the 64,898, which is already at 100%. That's the driver.
Okay. So, that'll balance out in the second, in the third and fourth quarter?
Absolutely.
Just one more item on that page would be 5382. Again, it's 700,000.
It's the same answer, Springfield Water and Sewer.
Huge number, yeah. And if it could be clearer that that's what it is, if that were possible, instead of OTR Purchase Services Other. And again, I understand if there are 47 items in here, that's different, but if it's mainly that one item.
I think 95% is Springfield Water and Sewer.
It'd be so nice to have that out there, and nobody could ask about the others. It'd be so much smaller. Thank you.
Next is the Stormwater Enterprise Fund, which you're all familiar with. This is our first year at having this fund. Our revenues are currently doing a little bit lower than you would expect at this point in the year, but given how we are billing them, it is exactly where I would think that it should be. The expenses are a bit below where it should be at this point in the year. So, overall, we are in really good shape, actually, for this fund. Again, the biggest driver in the salary is the one-time retirement payment for 10,384, so you will see that it's already at 100% spent. Any questions on Stormwater?
I have a question through the Chair. The Stormwater revenue, you mentioned, what was projected?
289,075, which it states right there.
So, this is the original appropriation?
Yes.
That's what was projected?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, last is the LCAT Enterprise Fund, which I do apologize, it seemed to have printed funny on some of them, but I don't know if it printed funny for everybody, so I do apologize if it did. So the revenue, we are at 26.89%. The salary is at 37.5. Again, the main driver is the one-time retirement payment for $20,768. The overall... The non-salary expenses, excuse me, is at 18.88%. The expense total currently is at 36.03%, and the overall is at 18.9%. At this point in the year, again, I am not worried about this account at all. Any questions?
Thank you for the column.
You're welcome. Any other changes to the format? That how the enterprise fund's looked is how you want? Anything else that I know for the next quarterly meeting to make sure that it all shows all of that, because the next quarterly is in January? So I just want to make sure that then I'm on the same page as what you would like.
Again, through the chair, just some sort of legend to break it down. And as Pat pointed out, if there's one item in there, and it's $700,000, and you're spending $650,000 on one item, why can't we list on one item? Well, at least we have an understanding of what it is.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Is there any way to take, let's say, category 5372, Water and Sewer, and just write Springfield Water and Sewer? And that way there, we can just cross-reference the two? I mean, that way there, you don't have to go through...
You mean in a legend?
Yeah, exactly. That way then, you don't have to go through and change the system or anything. But quickly, we can look at the legend and say, okay, that one, 700, whoa, okay, that's where it's going.
That would be great, and I think that would be the easiest way, so then I also don't have to move the things that aren't Springfield Water and Sewer out of there. So that would make a lot more sense. That would be great, I can do that.
Again, the legend is described, and also, don't forget the capital.
Yep, that's already on my list, so we'll send that out, and it will have the balances as of December 31st. And so like what I've done in the past, it will be all of the capital that still have balances, what their original appropriation was, what the current balance is, and a little status update based on discussions that I have with whichever department is responsible for said project. So that's what you will see for the capital. Does that make sense to everybody?
I'm gonna just... Well, I'll talk out loud. This is just something off the top of my head. Well, when we... For discussion, when we look at the capital, I think it might be important to have it broken out, completed projects and projects that have not been completed?
So, okay, so you want the... I typically only produce the ones that are still in status, in working. So if you want closed, what point do you want it closed as of? You want it closed in the current fiscal year? You want it closed in prior fiscal years? Because there are currently close to four... No. There are close to 400 closed capital projects. So I just want to make sure that I'm not giving you pages and pages of info that you don't really need.
Right.
You know, because of how old they are, I want to make sure that it's relevant for you.
I'm just talking about this year, yeah.
Yeah. Just the ones closing this fiscal year?
Well, we approved the capital budget for last year.
For whatever was on that list that got approved. I think what Tom's saying is...
So the ones that were...
Closed, then you can say that, and if it's still in progress, say that.
So if they... The projects that were approved at the May 28, 2019 meeting?
Correct.
That are already closed to report those, but any that were approved at a previous meeting you don't care about right now, correct?
Or previous year.
Previous year, yeah.
Previous year, right.
Right, so that, and then I assume any of the capital projects that were approved in June also of 19 that were approved out of free cash. So we're all on the same page.
And also, the outstanding ones.
Well, yes, those I was giving anyway.
Yeah.
And I'm presuming under closed, if a project was approved for $100,000 and is now closed, and it only costs $87,000, you're showing those two numbers, right? You would show that, okay. Or the converse, it costs $110,000.
Okay, so you want to know therefore what gets transferred back to its original thing? Yep.
Lots of information.
Lots of numbers, yeah. Any other questions for Sarah on this? It's my understanding that Old Business III, the General Bylaw 3.020D regarding a special audit of the town clerk, Sarah, you also have information on? So I would like to move out of order and have Sarah report on that now, mostly in terms of efficiency for her.
I think we're in still in order, because we... Didn't we address the old business revolving funds revised?
We haven't done the...
We didn't do the council rules, so we just have to hopscotch one, so...
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so general audit, as of the last day of employment. This was brought up by Ralph.
I saw it under the general bylaws when I was going through, and it was like, wait a minute. So I keep reading it, and I'm not quite sure if it's from the annual audit that we do to the time a person leaves?
I believe that that is the case, and that when we had, when the charter changed and the collector, treasurer, clerk position was divided, we had to do a similar thing because we still had that bylaw in place. And technically, Mr. Florence had stepped down, therefore, as collector treasurer. So we still had to do that, and that had happened in May. So we had had to do an audit, therefore, from July 1 through May in that instance.
Three years ago, right.
That's correct. So I believe that that is the correct interpretation, so we would need to do one from July 1 through September 30, which was Mr. Florence's last day.
And through the chair, would that be an internal audit that inside we do, or do we have to hire someone to do it?
So bylaw, you don't... You can choose which one you want to do. So you can choose to do an internal, or you can choose to do an external. Both are considered acceptable. Three years ago, when I looked into this, then I found out that several communities do have a very similar bylaw for different positions within theirs, and it's a mixture of who does what. So it really depends on what you all would like to do. I did call and got a verbal quote from our current auditors if they were to do an audit, an audit essentially for us. So because of the scope of what we would be having them do, it would actually be an agreed-upon procedures. So that is essentially that you are saying, these are the areas that I would like you to look at, and these are the kinds of things that I would like you to report on, and then they will do exactly that. They can... It's not a full-blown audit, it's not an audit of all the other areas, it's just in that very specific area. So they gave a quote saying, you know, just the limited scope that I was able to give them, since I'm not exactly sure what more you might want. He estimated no more than $2,000 to be able to do that. Now granted, depending on what you put on the agreed-upon procedures, it could be less than that, it could be more than that, depending on how many procedures that you want them to perform, but that in average, it would be around that. If you wanted to do an internal, we could do that. That would be something that will be coming out of my department at this time that we are swamped with a lot of things. So if that is something, then other things will have to go on the back burner. But if that is what the council wants to do, then by all means, we will make that happen.
Looks like someone...
Well, that's good information. On the one hand, I'm a little reticent to spend the money, but on the other hand, we're growing, we're on the cusp of walking into the, a new budget, and we know how time-consuming that is for...
For the office.
For Sarah's and her office.
I would support spending approximately $2,000 for the audit, because I understand it's, you know, it's not a usual function that your department's responsible for.
Right. Anyone else?
So through the chair.
Yes.
If I can put Mary on the spot as far as something like this, I mean, what would your thoughts be? I mean, this is something new to me. Like I said, I just happened to see that an audit needs to be done.
I know, I remember the night you brought it up.
And it doesn't really say what type of audit.
Right, and Sarah and I talked about this at length today, in terms of whether it should be internal or whether it should go external, and if it should be the existing town accountant firm that has been doing it. I have a thought that maybe we ought to look elsewhere for that, just for pure audit purposes. But I think for compliance and under the circumstances with the budget pending and the short term, because I agree that we really just have to look at July 1 to September 30.
Exactly.
Right. And so I would prefer to go external at this point, and Scanlon's fine with me. Because I just think those audits being done internally by someone like, for example, when Sarah retires, she had done audits for other colleagues that had resigned or retired, and then some, you know, then she's going to have to be audited. So I think when you have this sort of internal... It's not a separate department, we don't have an auditor. So I'd prefer to go outside.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, through the chair.
Yes.
I agree with Mary in one regard. In my business career, it's been a common best practice to change auditors on a regular basis, so that you make sure that every, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. I'm not... I agree that we need to go outside, but I think we ought to maybe look at using a different auditor, either for this or in the future, definitely.
So through the chair, and I'm going to direct it to Sarah, because I'm assuming you would know, how many different audit firms are out there that do municipal auditing of towns? From what I understand...
More than I can list.
There's a lot.
Okay, okay, because I had heard it was very limited, at least in the past.
There are different factors that you need to consider. So you asked how many audit firms. Technically, most audit firms will do it, but it's also what kind of a price tag do you want to pay? If you're going to pay, if you want to pay a lot of money, you can get one of the big four, they will definitely do it. But you can also, you know, then go with more local. There's a very wide range of them out there now. I also don't know in the local area that service, that would possibly service our area, I'm not sure how many have openings for clients, or how many are booked, or what the wait is for something, because this is a... The agreed-upon procedures is a separate kind of thing. So, I mean, we could definitely look into all of that, by all means, that would be fine, but I don't think it's for a lack of having options.
And, yeah, it's not... I'm not looking at it for this, I'm just wondering, I think it's Scanlon that we...
We currently use Scanlon and Associates, yes.
How long have we been using them? And, I mean, is that just our normal go-to? Is it time after 20 years to say, hey?
We've been using them for a long time. We did use them a very, very long time ago, then we had switched companies, and then we wound up ultimately going back to Scanlon. I can't remember exactly when we last did all of that. I know I've seen the audit reports, but I can't picture the year on the top of my head, but we have been with them a long time. The partners have changed a couple of times on the audit. So sometimes, depending on the group, so coming from the external, non-municipal world, sometimes that is enough to satisfy clients is that you completely change your partner, because it's somebody else within the firm that then takes a fresh look at it, and that then they feel that meets that fresh eyes kind of look. Sometimes then others feel that they need to change firms entirely. So it's all contingent on what the overall governing body wishes to do. Something to keep in mind in the year that you do change auditors, if you completely change firms, that is a very expensive year, because no matter what auditor it is, they are going to need to start everything from the beginning, and so they typically do charge significantly more that first year. It then evens out going on further years, but that is just something to keep in the back of your mind, not that that should prohibit you, but just so then you're aware that that is standard.
Pat? The discussion is getting off-topic. I'd like to make a motion that we engage Scanlon to do the audit at this time, to do the audit for, from, for the period July 1 through September 30.
Second.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I sense we've discussed it out. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
So for the agreed-upon procedures, is that something that you would like me to type up? Is it something that you would like Mary to type up? That one of you would like to, as to which exactly procedures? Or do you want me to just work with Scanlon to figure out what would be common in there?
You're asking seven non-auditors.
Well, six anyway.
I'm happy to do it, I just don't want to make the assumption.
No offense.
I was a compliance officer.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I'm sorry, was that an answer?
So, Tom? No, we don't...
Oh.
I don't think we answered you.
Leave it up.
I would leave it up.
Okay, thank you.
Are you okay with it?
I'm fine with that, I just didn't want to make an assumption and be wrong, so, thank you.
Well, I think a good practice would be for Sarah to do it and then review it with the town manager and the council.
Right.
Before a commitment is made, to make sure it's going to cover everything we love to say.
So for the whole council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we want to put a price tag, no more than?
Well, you said around $2,000?
That's what she said, but...
Yeah, that was the verbal, without having the, you know, I just talked in general about the types of things.
So I got to amend my motion to say not to exceed $2,500?
I'd be okay with $2,500.
What was the number, $2,500?
Sarah said the ballpark that...
No, but you said $2,500?
$2,500, yeah.
That's my amendment.
So we need to vote on that, we just can't insert it, so...
Do we have to say where it's coming from? Is it coming out of our budget? Is it coming out of?
That I would come out of the clerk's budget.
Sorry.
You're already a deficit now, sorry, Jen.
She said no. Sorry. But since it is the department that is therefore causing the expense, and typically we go...
Causing the expense.
It's not Jen's fault, by any means.
It's the bylaw's fault.
But that way then, it's still tracked where it actually occurred. So if we were to look at it later, we wouldn't think that it was financial statement audit related, you know, that kind of stuff. That is what we did in the past when we had the other special audits done for different cases.
Okay, so we need an amendment, I mean, a motion...
Motion on the floor, not the...
We voted on it, didn't we?
Not the, well, we...
Not the amendment?
Not the amendment, right.
Okay.
We're attaching a price.
We're attaching a price to the previous motion that was approved. All those, and the amendment is not to exceed $2,500. All those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so that's... Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
You're welcome.
All right, what do we have here? We are under Old Business now, we have revised town council rules that, as we discussed initially at our last meeting, you have those in your packet. The revisions are listed for you in red. It's back with us this evening because we want to make sure these were based on my notes as well as Jen's', and I want to make sure that our notes reflect the wishes of the council. So rule number one has two paragraphs that have adjustments. The first one, the insertion of the clause at which the full council is present, I think that goes without saying. But the second paragraph needs some work, as we talked quickly right at the beginning, right prior to our meeting. "The president and vice president may serve more than two consecutive years in the same office unless otherwise approved by a majority vote of the council." And I feel like it's missing a word, but I'll let you speak, Pat.
I believe that the word, missing word is not.
Right.
The president and vice president may not serve more than two consecutive years in the same office unless otherwise approved by a majority vote of the council. And I think that would square it away.
So through the chair. My statement was, we have to take a vote each year anyways who we're putting in. It's a majority vote to put them in, so this language doesn't change it at all. If we had a supermajority to approve to go to a third year, then that would change it.
I agree. Well, how do we want to do it then? I would agree with Ralph. Unless other, otherwise approved by a supermajority.
Supermajority council.
Which would mean five votes. Everyone's okay with that? All right. Under Rule 5A, purposes warranting executive session, all the way down to number four, there was a word inadvertently dropped off from the previous document to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices.
Yep.
So that's, Jeannie caught that. Rule 5E was just a change in language there. We are deleting response to public and leaving it council comment. Rule 5F, public comment. We, I believe our discussion, we were, the consensus was that we would remove the issue of a resident wishing to speak, needing to sign up with the clerk by 3:45 on the day, and just take it off the table, and just use the practice that if a resident is in the audience and wishes to speak under public comment, they, he or she would be recognized by the chair. And again, with appropriate time warranted.
I think it makes it more user-friendly.
Yeah, just a discussion on that.
Yes.
Because it says any member of the public. My concern is, I want to make this available to residents. Other people from other communities, I think they need to sign up. So I think it ought to say, any member of, or any resident of the town.
Of the town. That makes sense to me.
I mean, everything else can be subjected to, you know, they show up at the last minute and they want to speak.
Well, if you had a town employee, well, the town employee would, they could speak as a town employee if they weren't a resident of the town. I was just trying to think of, you know, we can always change this in the future if it becomes cumbersome, but I think the issue mainly has been-
Remove the barrier.
-remembering to go in and sign up, and then people show up, and I worked late and I couldn't get there to sign up, and so they couldn't speak.
Well, as long as they called, they don't have to physically come in. But it's still the barrier of having to sign up.
Right, but this is for the residents, and I agree with you. And I think the residents ought to have the opportunity to speak. I, in my opinion, unless there's an issue on the table that we are trying to address that affects our town from someone outside of our town, I don't care to hear from them.
I, well, I can think of an example, I'm sorry.
No, no, don't worry.
I can think of an example where an individual doesn't live in East Almetto, but was developing a project in East Almetto, and had a concern and wanted to bring it before the council.
That, again, that's fine.
Or a business owner.
Yeah, they can, a petition, like normal, like on a Friday afternoon, can make sure we have the information we need before they come to us.
Well, this is only public comment, though, so we don't need any information.
Yeah, all they can do is give an opinion, we don't respond.
Well, they, they can stand up and talk at us or to us for three minutes.
Yeah, that's true.
It's time limited to three minutes as well.
Thank you. That was, that was my point. We have to trust the council president to say, okay, where are you from? Oh, okay, I understand, it's three minutes.
Right, the chair always has the opportunity to-
No presentations.
And I think for the most part-
It doesn't happen enough to-
You don't have to worry too much.
Do you have something to say?
Not saying anything in particular, but-
I'm just trying to be clear and efficient. I don't want to see non-residents take up residents' time.
Well, if that were the case, then I think the chair reserves the opportunity to say, are there residents in the audience this evening who wish to address the council? And I would take them first.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you almost have to adjust spontaneously when you see what you're dealing with.
Can you do that?
Pretty much.
Thank you.
Moreland. Will, now, you know what? The last sentence, "Time allowed for public comment will be limited to three minutes for each individual speaking unless waived by the," it says majority of the council, but it's really the chair, or the presiding council.
It should be the chair.
It should be the chair, right.
Based on Robert's rules or any other public-
So it shouldn't even say presiding council chair, it should say-
Council president.
Council president, right.
Take presiding out, and you're fine.
So we're striking presiding.
The president is absent that evening, and the vice president is-
But he's acting in-
So it would be the presiding council president.
Right.
Oh, that's a, that's a point.
I think that's, I think that was the thought process behind it. Or would it be presiding council chairman?
Presiding council chair covers president, vice president, or whomever.
Or whomever.
Right, probably best.
All right, presiding-
Council chair.
Council chair. All right.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Earlier in that paragraph, we have, shall be recognized by the presiding officer. So you're having two fighting terms with each other?
Oh, yeah, we do have two fighting terms. Presiding chair. The next thing I see is Rule 9, rejected measures insertion after within six months of or as may be required by Massachusetts general law. Ralph, I think you brought that up. Rule 11, we are striking vice president from that last sentence, the president and vice president of the council shall not serve as a chairperson. We're removing vice president.
You need to remove and as well, yes.
Right, and and. And then, under that same rule, all of the, the standing committees, the Financial Oversight Committee and the Planning Matters Standing Committee, we struck two and added up to three. And we did the same under ad hoc for licensing matters, general bylaws. And with the caveat inserted at the bottom that, in no case should a standing committee or an ad hoc committee be com- composed-
Compromised.
Comprised.
Comprised, not compromised.
Comprised of more than five counselors and residents.
Also, another typo, Kathy.
Yep.
The first one, Financial Oversight Standing Committee, it says up to the three town residents.
Yep, it sure does.
There should be no the.
Thank you.
I know it's picky.
Well, it's necessary. Anything else here? I don't see any. So, since we will officially amend them, we need a motion to amend the council rules effective December 10th, as discussed. Is it in there? I didn't-
Yes.
There's no date.
Go ahead, Ralph.
Where are we?
The last one, see.
The last one?
There's no date.
There is no date, effective today.
Well, the cover page has to have it, so you might as well say it.
Okay, I move to approve the revisions to the town council rules as reflected in the document as presented, and changes to the document as discussed.
On today's date?
On December 10, 2019.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of you say aye. Opposed? Good, we have amended rules, thank you. And that brings us to, New Business summary, action items for the next meeting. Well, our next meeting is next Wednesday, and our action items are to go home and do our homework, review resumes, and- Questions. Questions, if, again, if you have things that you feel Bernie should be aware of, please call or email him. Does anyone not have his contact information?
I do not.
Is it not on the document?
I don't know.
I will-
No, it's not.
Okay.
Because I was not on the council when-
Here it is. I can say it out loud to you, or I can email it to everyone.
Why don't you email it, rather than say it out loud?
I'll just email it, the whole thing, okay.
Because we'll have the town calling up.
All right, that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Wow. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned at 8:02 PM, and we'll be back in session on Wednesday, December 18th at 4:00 PM to identify a new town manager. Thank you and good evening.